In the planning commission meeting to order, let the record show that we have 6:35ish. And that Commissioner Rodriguez is absent today. Mary, would you lead us, please, in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible)
Moving on, approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Peroni. Second.
I second it.
Second by Commissioner Salsar. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass. Public comments, non-agendized items? None. Moving on to consent agenda. Approval of the regular meetings for commission meeting of February 27, 2017, and minutes of April 10, 2017. I have a couple of corrections for the set of minutes for April 10. Item two, yes. Thank you. Page, what is it, two? Page four? Which is, second to the last? Second paragraph where it says city manager via. That paragraph doesn't make sense. I don't know what staff was trying to say there. You lost me. We're missing like some wording, adjective or something in there. Any? You just want to correct it, or?
I believe what Mr. Villa was saying is that applying these types of ordinances or making these amendments happens all the time. That's what I thought he was saying. So we could go back and look at the tape if you...
No, no, no. It's just the way the words read is just, it makes no sense. Like, what was he trying to say? What was the message you were trying to come across, saying that all new projects comply with the amendments and ordinances? Or something like that? Because it's just...
Process of requiring new projects...
Comply or do, are applied or something? Or is that what we're trying to?
Must comply.
Okay. Yes, okay.
With recent amendments and ordinance being proposed by city agencies, you know, happens all the time. And he was explaining...
Right. And then on the...
You want us to add that word?
Yeah. That way it'll make more, it'll be clear and concise. Also, on the, on top where it says staff comments, that paragraph where it says city clerk, Gabby Garcia, that's a separate item. I think that was new items or informational items. So that could be...
We'll just create a heading there.
Right. Because it's added to the motion made by the item for, for the public hearing.
Okay, I believe that was an informational item.
Right. So if we could just break that apart.
Correct the heading.
That's it. Other than that, I'm okay. Any other corrections from the commissioners? No? Do we have a motion to approve the minutes for item one and two?
So moved.
I second it.
We have a motion by Commissioner Peroni, seconded by Commissioner Salsar. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Pass, four to one. Public hearings continue. This is a continuation of the existing ordinance text amendment. We're going to open the public hearing at this moment. 6:40. No one in attendance. We'll close it. 6:41. No comments. Favor or against staff? Ralph, if you want to give us your presentation here? Try to convince us this time.
Chairperson and planning commissioners. I don't know what to use. What I'd like to do, I'd like to kind of show you a slide in the beginning to show, I think it was something that was requested. We also went out there, well, Mark went out there and he took some, some pictures of some of the properties in the corner. Basically, what we're doing is just to kind of go back and discuss this a little bit. This is regarding the, the off-street parking, which is the, for corner lots. As you know, that back in, I think it was in the year 2...
2008.
2000. Or 2007, probably. Then the garage enclosures were allowed along the street runs, subject to provisions of providing replacement covered parking behind the front yard setback. And this is a, something that was approved through a resolution and went through the planning commission. This was an attempt to amend the city orders during, back in the late 90s, to allow relief from meeting the requirements and replacing the covered parking located entirely behind the front yard setback. One of the issues that they were having is that because there wasn't enough space within that 20-foot clearance, then it was making it very difficult. So because of this, then the staff came before the planning commission and requested to allow for placement of carports, which would be half the distance into the required front yard setback. For example, if the setback was 20 feet, then the allowance would be that they could come in 10 feet from those 20 feet. And so, there was something that was again provided to the planning commission and it was approved at that time. On January 14, 2008, a public hearing was held and the planning commission resolution 2008, or, excuse me, dash 02, providing adequate flexibility to encroach it to the, half the distance into the front yard setback. And it was adopted, again, it was adopted by the planning commission and it was recommended to the city council to also adopt. One of the things that was not brought up was the garage enclosures on corner lots. It was something that was not discussed at that time. But consequently, some of the applicants applied for garage enclosures on the corner lots and they did not want to build replacement covered parkings for two-car, which includes construction of a concrete driveway across the front yard in order to preserve their landscaping and also maintain property values. To meet these replacement covered parking requirements, then one of the things that they're doing is, or were doing, was use the rear patio areas, which was constructed previously, and requesting to use that as a, as a cover parking. This was done with approval of an enclosure permit, which was issued by the engineering division to construct a second driveway of the side yard. The problem here is that a lot of the patios were not constructed wide enough to accommodate the two vehicles. Therefore, the parking had to be tandem, one vehicle behind the other one. And there's sometimes, they've become kind of dangerous, being that it made it difficult for the car to, it's in the further section inside to come out. So, again, there were things to kind of look at. Now, one of the things is that, to address this issue, the following options by the staff is requested for your consideration. There are four items here. One is for residents who would like to use the side yard as a driveway entrance into the rear yard patio to meet the requirement of replacement covered parking. The approaching driveway at the front of the house shall be removed and replaced with curb, gutter, and sidewalk across the front, no longer providing access. The catch 22 is using the side yard as primary driveway to rear yard patios and blocking out the front driveway access that cars may tend to park in the street. The second option would be to continue to allow the use of rear patio as replacement covered parking with city approval and leave driveway access to front of house open under the city's current provision. The third option would be not to allow any rear parking at all. And then the fourth one would be to require review and approval of a CUP for garage enclosure under certain circumstances on corner lots with conditions for mandatory construction of front carport or other variations which meet the city requirements. Now, the CUP or the conditional use permit fee and that would be $3,300, $3,354. So, at this time, what we're requesting is that the planning commission do consider the staff recommendation, which should be recommendation number, number three. And, but, we also would like to show you a little PowerPoint to show what the difference is. Mark?
Okay, so here's just some examples of the garage enclosures. This shows the front driveway and then a driveway off the side yard. And, you know, there's, there's some older examples, there's some newer examples. As you can see, they have on the right, the slide on the right, they have a driveway and then a rear patio.
Are these corner homes?
Yes. All of these are corner.
Only corner?
Only corner.
Okay.
Okay, here's another one. (inaudible).
Okay, you don't like, this example that you're showing us, is that you want to cancel the front entrance. Is that correct? In one of your, your option one?
Yeah, that's one, yeah.
Yeah, that's what you, I said, requested in the beginning.
Right.
Okay.
And then, these slides also show, you know, whether the properties were kept or how they were kept on the outside.
Yeah.
The fence is properly lined and then that five feet between the fence and the back of the sidewalk is city right of the, I mean, I know there were many comments of, you know, how that's kept. So, some of these slides show that also, that there are some that are kept up. So, we'll just keep going on. In this case, you know, they are watering the grass all the way to the back of the sidewalk. And then the side yard has a really nice gate. There was a driveway, a slide on the right, that just shows the carports on the rear patio. Didn't give a picture of the actual driveway. But these are all corner lots. Okay, this one doesn't have a driveway. They have the gate and the rear patio, but didn't quite get to the driveway yet. And this one didn't either. This one made the error. The driveway necessary. It could get some two cars in there.
I see you can get up to three cars right in the front of the house.
Yes. Yeah, that driveway in the front.
See, so that's where I have a kind of difficulty, Mark, in why would we require them to park cars in the back and cancel the front? If it stayed like this, I don't believe it's doing anything...
Yeah, that would be option two, continuing to allow the use of rear patio as replacement covered parking with city approval and leave driveway access to the front of house open.
Yeah, because...
Under the city's current...
What happens here, this was a driveway.
Yeah.
So now we're going to request them to make a driveway. So you're, either he tears it out and puts grass, because he's going to be losing yard in the back. So, to me, it's, let's...
Yeah, it's, I know. It's that catch 22. And then I'll show you a slide where, where a few years ago, a person actually took the driveway, front driveway out and planted grass.
Uh huh, okay.
But they ran out of money to do the carport.
Oh.
I'll show you that in a second. There's only about 50, I think, slides. There's another one. It's pretty, you know, that's kept up pretty good.
Yeah. That's what I like about homeowners and Colexico. You know, they have that pride in ownership. They do a lot of fixing to their houses and it's nice to see that.
Yeah. Get a lot of nice ones.
Yeah. Oh, that one.
This one's a little bit different. And I don't believe this house had a rear patio, but they had that driveway there just to get into the backyard. So, this is one of those where it's not kept up too. Okay, newer house.
Is that in Rainbow Park, or?
No, it's McMillan's.
Oh, okay.
That's, Bowman's, yeah, that's Bowman's, corner of Bowman's. So, so yeah, the front driveway, you can see the garage enclosures and then they had the side driveway off the entrance, meaning to the rear patio. Okay, so, notice this slide. See how they took out the driveway and the approach with the garages?
Yeah.
They took everything out, planted grass.
But then they made a humongous driveway on the side.
And they ran out of money to do the carport. So, you know...
So, the carport is permitted in the front, not in the rear?
Well, this is on the street run. This, this slide is not on the corner. I was just trying to show how that would look, like taking the front, approach a driveway. So, but, they never got to the, to the garage enclosure. I don't think they ever got to the garage enclosure or the replacement covered parking. But they, because they spent so much money doing the curb and gutter, see where this new driveway is?
Yeah, this house created a lot of parking space.
That's where the new carport was going to be.
They also have on the side of the house, more access.
Yeah. So, that's it, that's it as far as garage enclosures. We're just trying to show some of the different conditions out there. But there's all types of variations of this issue.
So, with that in mind, basically, what, what staff is recommending is that we go with option three, which would be not to allow any rear parking at all, at this point. One of the other things that, that we've noticed is that with garage enclosures, is that a lot of individuals are putting that temporary, those temporary shades. And that also takes away from the, the static of, of the property. So, that's one of the other things that, you know, the planning commission might want to keep, my fault. So at this time, we're requesting the planning commission to look at these options and price that with one of their, their options.
We're going to open for discussion for the commissioners. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for staff?
I do have a question. What was the, the recommendation that the planning staff recommends?
Well, what the staff is recommending, there's a typo in our staff report.
That's what I was going to say. I was going to, I was confused.
Yeah.
Actually, it should, staff is recommending that the planning commission approve option number three.
Option number three?
Yes.
Don't allow rear parking at all?
Black number one, Beth. Okay. Any other questions? Any other questions? No?
Well, I'm really having a lot of trouble on, on a few things. You know, when you're required, you know, to review the approval of the CUP and have the homeowner pay $3,300, it's hard for me to fathom that. Because they've already saved money to put their cement, their little work, and now, before they do anything, it's $3,300. So, my question to you, Ralph, is, are all CUPs have one price? Or is...
There's a mic. There's two types, minor and major.
Yeah, this would be a minor. So, the minor CUP would be the, the $3,354.
What's the major?
The major CUP would be probably like in a big development or something like that.
Do you know what the price is in the major?
Do you remember what that price there?
I'm not sure. Okay.
Okay. Residential would be the $3,354.
Any other questions? Please?
No.
Ralph, I have a question on your staff report on item four. It says, "For other variations which meet city requirements," meaning you're giving other options. What are those? If you can explain that or just elaborate what you mean with...
On the, on the recommendation?
Yes.
Number four.
Number four, item number four of your recommendations.
Well, I'm going to say that what was meant there is that other variations would be, there were other conditions that had to be met. Not, not every, every project would, would be the same, depending on what the situation So, probably depending on what the situation on the, on the property may be, if there's not enough backyard setback.
Or also, sometimes there's three garages, you know, there's three car garages.
Three car garage, uh huh.
So, you know, they may want to just enclose one and leave, leave two open. And so, we get a lot of that sometimes.
Okay, so in that...
Or vice versa, I'm sorry. It would be more if they close two car parking and they have one parking. So, in the rear, then they wouldn't need a two-car parking, but they would need a one-vehicle parking.
Okay.
And the three-car garages, because we've had that situation.
So, in a scenario like that, if they want to close only a portion of their existing garage, will they have to close up a portion of their driveway and their curb and the approach? Modify the entrance of the vehicle, or do they have to eliminate it completely regardless?
Well, that's something that we would have to look at. I don't, I don't think it would be something that we would tell them, well, narrow that driveway down.
So then how can we apply, if we were to vote for item number three, your, your recommendation item, item number three? How would we...
Well, the parking, then, if, if you go with item number three, then that means that all the parking would be in the front.
So, they...
Then, then you would not, they would not be allowed to do...
So they will leave it intact?
Any parking in the rear. Even if they have a three-car garage, then they would do a one-car parking in the front.
Okay. But they will not be able to, in the future, ask for a CUP or variance to open up?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
But they could, Ralph, open up the side of their fence without a driveway. Is that correct?
No.
Like have a fence, you know?
No, you can't. One of the problems we've been having is that people that put gates on the...
Yeah, seen a gate, huh?
Yeah, gates and they don't put a driveway. They still use it as a driveway and they damage the sidewalk.
They jump the curb?
Yeah, they jump the curb.
And do you really see a lot of cases like that?
We've seen quite a few, yeah.
Really?
Yeah, we had to send court enforcement out there and enforce a lot of these cases where they, they put a gate and they used it as a, as a driveway to go in.
And this modification is only for the corner lots, right?
Just for corner lots. It's nothing with the, with the properties in the interior of the lot, of the block, I mean.
Not in the, not in the, other rest of the lots?
It would not impact the, any other properties.
Any other questions?
I have a question. So, so any corner home will never be able to enclose a garage? Pretty much?
No, they, they can't close their, their garage. What, what it means is that their parking or covered parking would have to be in the front.
Okay. And just do a carport?
They could not put them in the rear.
And do a carport in front with a carport?
Yes. It would have to be in the front, yes.
They would just never be able to use the side?
Yeah, they, they wouldn't lose the privilege or the opportunity that the rest of the properties have. The only thing is that they couldn't do their, their parking in the rear.
Okay, I understand. Any other questions?
Commissioners, are we ready to make a motion for, with staff recommendation to recommend option number three? Along with resolution number 2017-dash-blank-blank? Do we have a motion? I'll make a motion to approve staff recommendation with option number three and the resolution attached to.
I'll second that motion.
Second by Commissioner Gardinas. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion denied.
Okay, so number two would be continue to allow the use of rear patio as replacement covered parking with city approval and leave driveway access in front of the house.
It's the same provision, it's the same, that's what we're doing now.
Stay still.
So...
That's what you do today?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I make a motion to, for number two.
My second.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Peroni, seconded by Commissioner Salazar, to approve condition number two, to continue and allow the use of rear patio and replacement covered parking with city approval and leave driveway access to the front of the house open under the city's current provisions. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those against it? No?
Aye. No.
No. Motion doesn't pass, two, two?
Ralph, what's, for purpose of clarification here, what's the difference between item one, option one and option four?
Well, option four is a CUP. That means that they would have to apply for a conditional use permit.
Right, but wouldn't they have to do it either way on the first one? No? I mean, they still need to provide you with the permit to make sure the, the replacement of the covered parking is within their setbacks and what have you.
Well, item number one automatically makes them remove the sidewalk, curb and gutter.
Right.
And, and so they would have to landscape that section of it. While, uh, the, the number four, there is nothing that says there that they would have to re- remove their driveway. So review and approve of a CUP for garage enclosure under certain circumstances on it.
Well, wouldn't, wouldn't those conditions be the same mandatory?
Well, you could put, you could probably put those same two conditions together. They go for a CUP, which means that they would have to remove the, the driveway or, yeah, the, the approach and the driveway and all that. That could be combined.
Combine one and four, one and four.
Cause the item one, uh, option one will give them the option to use the rear, I mean, to use their backyard for dri- for driveway patio purposes, but they will have to block off the existing on the garage, right?
Yes.
Four might be a little different because, you know, that's more for three-car garages.
Right.
Same, you may wanna enclose two and leave one, but you probably still require one other space.
And in the, in, and in the, um, in the case that they need a variance or CUP, they would have to come to us or they will just do it administratively through you?
No, we would, we would bring it to the planning commission.
To the planning commission?
Yeah.
So that we can have a rule on a case-by-case basis?
We'll have the final say so on it. It, it would go through the process, it would, it would prob- probably go through a, uh, the project review.
Right.
And then we would bring their recommendation to the planning commission for final approval.
That would be, I'm gonna try it.
That, that would be an item number four.
Number four.
Okay, you know what, I, I think sometimes we, uh, create too much red tape. You know, something, I would see this as minutia for a planning, uh, meeting. This is something, you know, like they're saying, if it ain't broken, why fix it? You know, people wanna have their access in the front, wanna have it in the back. And just imagine charging a CUP, then bringing it to the commission. I think it's, uh, too much of a big deal.
Well, the, yeah, the, the only thing is the, the 33 would cover the, the, uh, it, uh, being brought before the, the planning commission.
So...
I mean, and, and those are just options, I mean...
Because I, I think you guys have, you know, a lot of talent, Ralph. You know, you know what you're doing.
Well, I wanna thank you for that.
You do. And you know, what I see, when I see a require a CUP for this and that, you know, and you've been trying to do it since 2008. It hasn't been done, you know, eight years later and, and we're still trying to do it. Hasn't been done for a reason. And to create just more, uh, fees becau- for the homeowner, I think it's kinda hard. Because when you, just imagine, taking off the approach of the front of the house. What's that gonna cost? You know, on top of the, taking off the approach, Ralph, you know, that's, you're looking at, at least 2,500, plus a 3,500 for the CUP, that's $7,000. Y tal ya non pesalas, 6,000. So, yeah, I, I, I see it a little difficult. Plus, you know, we have our house and if we wanna do a patio in the back, something nice, uh, how you guys been permitting? I saw a lot of nice examples here today. Why change it? You know, why, uh, why change it?
Does anyone have another motion on the floor?
Make a motion to approve staff report with item number four and the resolution along with it. Do we have a second? Motion dies for lack of second.
I make a motion that we approve number two.
My second. We already have that and it was denied.
Well, maybe, uh, can we do this?
Modification?
Modification.
Which are?
I would leave it off to staff, you know, maybe they're done in a way that aesthetically, you know, for the subdivision where they're at, everybody has, uh, a standard. Maybe that would, uh, keep, uh, houses from looking, that, you know, no, I've seen like those fences that they do the chain link on the side, no, you know, something nice. And you guys could probably, uh, you showed nice examples here today, you know, you know, something with standards. Is, is that fine, Jose? Okay, uh, with something like that, with standards on, on how they build, uh, the sliding door, the fence, whichever you wanna, wanna call it.
Okay. With item number two, going with item number two, what are the city's current provisions for if someone wants to come and ask for a permit for a rear patio? What are those conditions that must meet as a applicant? Right, on corner lots, rear patio, like item number two on your staff report.
And, and for the culture patio, that we don't have, uh, I mean, the only provision is that they meet the, the building code for, for construction. Since there's no, no doors that are going to be built, you're really, really not gonna see it in the, in the, from, from the front. Then as far as the design goes, uh, we really don't have, uh, a very strict design code for that because in the rear. When it comes to the front, then in the front, we do require that, that the design or of, of the carport carries the same design as a house as, as, as close as possible. So that it doesn't loo- lose that, because we don't want a, a, you know, a carport that's, that's, uh, in poor taste where, where it would take away the value not only of that other property, but that would impact the property next to it.
I think what can be done, like follow the integrity of the architecture around the area of the subdivision, would be something that we could consider and, and something like that.
So the city doesn't have a problem having two, two driveways on a corner lot or two approaches or any of that? There is no problem? There's no... Aesthetically only?
What we're looking at is, is the, the usage of, of the backyard. And, and basically what happens is that you, you, people will say, okay, I'm gonna use the backyard as parking, and they never do. And they start parking their, their vehicle in the front and you lost your parking, uh, uh, coverage area space. And, and again, what that does, it takes away from the integrity of the, of the structure that, that's, that's there. So by forcing them to put the carport and, and replacing the existing, then number one, then they provide a, a covered parking. Number two, then whatever they built there, then it'll carry the same design, uh, of the structure. And number three is that hopefully we can, you know, kind of discourage them or, or limit all these temporary shades that, that are being put up. There's not a whole lot that we do if it's a temporary shade because it can be removed and taken out right away. It's when they come in and they, and they put a permanent, uh, uh, a shea- aluminum shade that where code enforcement or the city will, will go out there and tell them to, to, to remove it. But again, as you drive down the street and you see these over and over again, and the, uh, answer I get from the people is, well, I don't have any, any shade. I don't have anywhere to park my car. Well, no, you don't because you covered your, your, your garage already. And, and that's what the problem that, that we're seeing. And, and, and the, and the problem in the corner lots is that they don't use their, the majority, I'm gonna say, don't use their, their parking in the rear. Either because they're, you know, too lazy to open the gate and, and drive the car in and close the gate or whatever it may be, but it's not being utilized.
I understand. I do have a problem with garage enclosures, only because I know staff does not code enforce those garage enclosures as called on the ordinance or by law. And then we have all these issues with our neighbors that, um, they either have, noisy renters, tenants, when they're supposed to be senior citizens. And then you have two, three families living in one garage enclosure with no code enforcement. And then you have that piled up of vehicles. And then you have that conflict of, you know, all these vehicles parked everywhere. And then you have that problem with, um, control, noise control, what have you. So I do have an issue with garage enclosures where staff does not enforce the law. On the corner lots, I do see some, in some places, that they have garage enclosures where they have vehicles blocking the access to the, uh, to the cars, to the traffic. Because there are parking on the corners, like you say, blocking the view for the oncoming traffic. And I do understand where staff is saying, you know, we don't want those. But how do we code enforce that? I mean, we're asking, don't do this, but yet we're gonna close our eyes and say, oh, okay, well, that's your problem now. How are we gonna code enforce that? How are we going to make sure that they do what we're saying? That they, we don't want them to do.
Any, anytime there is a, a garage enclosure, whether it's a granny flat or, or just a regular garage enclosure, there, there's a covenant that's signed between the city and, well, not between, but the, that the owner signs that they're not gonna use it for, for rental. Unfortunately, because of, we don't have the code enforcement and, and there's so much, so many issues that are going on, where, where code enforcement is, is, is not being active and going out and inspecting those, uh, garage enclosures. That's something that I'm trying to get organized so that we start doing it on an annual basis as many, as much as we can. Unfortunately, we have another issue that's coming up that, uh, and, and we'll be bringing this to you. And that is, there is a, uh, bill that has come out that now is allowing for second units on R1 properties.
On top of the granny flats?
And, well, they, they can enclose a garage, they can even put a second unit in the rear, uh, of their property, and, and they can be used for rental. And, and the, uh, there, there is a state bill on this. I don't know if any of you have seen it, but we're, we're, right now, uh, I'm getting ready to sit down with staff so we can review it and we can put some parameters on it because we just don't wanna allow it outright, but there has to be some parameters. But it's something that has to be, uh, approved by, by each jurisdiction. And so hopefully within the next month or so, uh, you'll be seeing staff bring this before you and for your review and approval. I mean, but like I said, it's, it's a state bill that has been put out. So there's gonna be more issues, not, not only in your neighborhood, but throughout, and, and that's...
Throughout the city.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion, so it was a numbered...
Do we have a second on that motion?
Yeah, we had a second.
Who seconded it?
I did.
Ms. Salazar. And, uh, the motion was to continue the way it is, just put standards on the sliding door and keeping the integrity of the neighborhood and the architecture of subdivisions or...
Or some kind of modification, right?
Exactly.
Small modifications, which then we let up to the staff, right?
Develop review, during the development review...
Yeah.
Exactly, keep, like, like I said, keeping the integrity of the neighborhood, you know, the subdivision. Because each one uses a different type of architecture.
So pretty, pretty much just letting them make the decisions as to what is the aesthetic of the garage enclosure and the carports.
Not leaving them to, to make it, but I'm saying keeping the integrity.
Right, but for staff to make that decision like they're doing right now?
Exactly, yes, yes.
It would be part of the plan checking process.
Correct.
Which we do some of that already, which is, you know, the design more...
Exactly, exactly.
Which, which would mean that if, yeah, just kind of throwing something out, that if they do have an existing patio and they wanna do their parking in the rear, then there would be some modification to that patio. That means that it could come down to the point where they would have to reconstruct that patio to make it, to make it wide enough so that two vehicles could park in there. And, and, and then, uh, the, the aesthetic or the design of it...
The way, the way you have it right now, how do you have it, Ralph? Because, you know, it says continue to allow the use of the rear patio as a replacement covered parking. Okay, how, how is that approved? What dimensions? You come in, is there a 12 by 16?
Well, we, they, they have to have more, and a rear patio, they have to have more. They have to have three feet clearance. So that somebody can, uh, have pre-access as, as a walkway. And then with that, we, we require at least 20, 22 feet.
Okay, 22 feet. Okay, now, are you comfortable the way, uh, it is now? You know, uh, with the...
Yeah, what makes it difficult right now is that we don't have, uh, a lot of teeth, you know, they come in and say, well, we're gonna add another section to it. And that makes it, makes it hard because we have nothing in, in our, in our guidelines or our, uh, municipal code that says, no, this is the way, you know, you have to do it. And they can come to push and shove.
Well, I, I, I think it would be kinda simple because you would say, I wanna have in the rear a couple of slots. So what's the size in the front? Or what's the size of a garage? So you do the size of a garage in the rear covered. If, uh, be, and not in all the cases because you showed one example where it was a, it looked like a one-car garage. It was probably somewhere in the, on the west side of town.
Yeah, it was probably, well, either that or, or, or the fact that you, there was a three-car garage in the front.
No, 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 it was a one, it was a small home.
No, I mean, that's why there, there was one car in, in, uh, you're talking about...
No, the garage was like for one car. And, you know, I, on Flotis Drive, there's a lot of one-car garages there.
That's, that's correct.
So, uh, you know, in, in a case like that, maybe they just wanna do another one in the rear.
And, and, and that would be because the, the code says that you replace one for one. In other words, on the older homes where there's only a one-car garage, then, then that's what you allow is a one-car.
Then I, I think number, number two, the way you guys have it is fine, just putting standards. Because, uh, the other way, you're, you're just changing it a lot, you know, the, you know, taking away the approach, making the homeowner spend, uh, a lot of money when they're, uh, they're gonna be, they already have a project on hand. You're gonna, uh, by doing all these modifications, it could go up from 30 to 35% to, on their cost.
What is, what's currently the, the plan check charges right now?
I'm sorry?
Plan checking, like for...
$200 for plan check. And then for a carport, it's about three, between three and four. And then for a carport, it's about three, between three and four.
Three and four. That's accessible, yeah.
Thirty-five hundred?
Mm-huh, mm-huh, that's.
And then taking away your approach in the front, so you.
Ralph, I have a question. Page four of, I don't know what it is, I think is the, the last page before, the attachments, I think. Attachment two? Attachment two or of your.
Attachment eight or?
Well, hold on, hold on.
Four.
Uh, attachment one. It's, it says page four on the bottom, but I don't know if it's the municipal codebook pages or what it is. It's highlighted, mine is highlighted in pink. You see it on item number D and one? You got it?
Yeah, that's directly the municipal code.
If you read item D, it says, on corner lots, driveways are not permitted outside yard setbacks, area except as provided below, removal of existing front primary driveway entrance, including city curb, gutter approach, sidewalk, leaving no access for front of the house. So you already have that in existence.
It was never approved.
That's what I need clarification.
It's a recommendation they provided.
Well, then with, you're right, that that was.
That's not.
Written wrong, it would be more like option three, the Ralph mentioned.
But what you're saying, this is like your option four, what you're trying to.
Well, there's already an existence within the municipal.
Well, this is more like option one.
Right.
No, but that's, that's written into this, that's written into the section of the code.
He put that. Staff, staff put that in there.
Okay. But this is not part of the municipal?
No, that's not, that's not what the.
This is just an extra page?
That's not what the code actually says.
Okay.
You would look at the resolution on the item, attachment two.
All right.
Yeah, so D, D, section D and one, that's actually not in there. What staff did, they went ahead and put it in there and that, just to show you what it would look like.
All right.
Sorry.
Now. Okay, Ralph, so.
Okay.
We have a motion on the floor, and seconded by Commissioner, I mean, motion by Commissioner Peroni, seconded by Commissioner Salazar, to approve staff recommendation, item two, with modifications that the garage enclosure facades meet code and rear patios, right? Something like that, in those words.
Correct.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Three, one. Motion passes. Moving on to item. Item number four, zoning ordinance text amendment. This proposal is to consider minor modifications to code section 1532050, construction on owner property fences. Public hearing? No, no, all right. Ralph, if you wanna enlighten us?
Little bit of background on this. According to section 15.31.050, the Callejico Municipal Code, fences are currently allowed to be built entirely on property line, which is normally five feet from back of the sidewalk. The code also states that a fence may be built inside the public runaway with review and approval of an encroachment permit issued by the Engineering Division. In, in 1996, the city attorney at that time provided written opinion regarding the ability of the, of the city to allow residents to construct fences outside their property line within the city runaway. And there's an exhibit for that. There was also a memo by the building official at that time to the city manager with his concern regarding the construction of fences outside the property line and within the city runaway. Again, there's a, a, an exhibit for that. The encroachment permit process has also made it possible for replacement of fences within the city runaway after review and approval by the city, the city engineer, Engineering Division. This has caused inconsistency throughout the city and many residents request payment of, placement of their fence inside the city runaway to gain more area. As a result, staff would like to discuss this issue with the planning commission and provide the following options for their consideration. And there's two options here. One is, for the city's current provision, allow fences to be installed on city runaway with review and approval of an encroachment permit by engineering. Number two, allow fences on property line only, with no exceptions. So we're, we're asking that the, at this time, that the planning commission consider staff's recommendation, and that is option two.
Can you repeat that again, Ralph? Your options?
Option one is, for the city's current provision, allow fences to be installed on city runaway with review and approval of an encroachment permit by engineering. And number two is, allow fences on property line only, and with no exceptions at all.
And we have a slide presentation. Fences? That's the way the city wants it, no? Okay.
Is that five feet or three feet?
Five. Right.
That's about three feet, no?
It's almost five.
That's five?
These are all pretty much five. And then we'll get into the ones that are in the right length. Okay, the front, the the left side is five, but the angle of course, it looks like it's a encroachment. Way before my time. And then there's a low, that's, that's five. So you can see they're watering the grass.
Yeah, good. How come that area doesn't have that sidewalk on the corner? That looks nice.
Yeah, this property goes all the way to the back, block wall, this thing, so they met that portion of the.
So that, that's less than five feet?
No, that's five.
That's in the passeo areas, no?
The green area, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's what it looks to me.
This is on the corner.
That one looks three feet.
Yeah, that one, yeah, that looks like it, so I was asking.
And then these, these show more, you could just take care of the basket, all the way to the, to the back of the sidewalk. Because he, the fire hydrant's in that, far away in the light.
You got the water meter?
The water meter, all, all the light. That's why the city would like it all properly. Okay, well, okay, we can go to these also, fences located within the city runaway.
You know that fence right there on, on, on your, on the right-hand side? It looks clean, it looks, doesn't look bad.
It's in the right way, that's.
Yeah, that's in the right way, huh?
About two feet away.
Yeah.
But it was through that way. Yeah, and these are, you know, this is old region. Same thing, that's about two or three feet away. And then you could see from the slide of the light, they take care of the property inside as well, inside now. Those are some different corner shots. Most likely within the back of the. That was right at the back of the sidewalk. Back of the sidewalk. Pour concrete all the way to the front door. Couple feet inside.
Even the stop sign, it's inside the.
It's inside.
The stop sign's in the inside.
So your recommendation is five feet?
Well, yeah, on the property, no exceptions.
Which is five feet?
It's in the staff report, page two.
Are you done?
Yes.
Any more comments, Ralph?
No.
I read your, your memo from former city attorney, Mike Rude. And he says in the conclusion that it is clear that the fences must be built within the line of property owner. If a variance is requested for permission to do so, that it specifically be prohibited by the code, then that should be, should go through the proper channels, which do not, which with no doubt includes the planning commission. So if we approve the. Tonight, if we approve the option number two, allow fences on property line only, no exceptions, how are we going to address the existing building code? It appears directly on a point as to build on fence outside the residency property section. So we will not allow any variances, we will not allow any conditions, exceptions at all. Is that what we're saying?
Let me re-. This is the second paragraph of Mike Rude's letter?
Conclusion, the conclusion on Mike.
Well, you know, the, the, the building code doesn't require a building permit for fence. The, the municipal code, the Callejico Municipal Code does. So if you go to El Centro, you go to Raleigh, I think, over there, they they can put up a fence and and a building permit is not required. In the city of Callejico, it is required.
Okay, we're not talking about El Centro, Raleigh, or what have.
No, we're talking about Callejico.
Yeah.
That's true. So it, it, it wouldn't be going against the, the building code because the building code is saying, hey, you don't need to have one.
But we know that one supersedes the other, so.
The municipal code supersedes the, the building code.
Correct.
In, in the section.
All right, so then we will, just for, for clarification and for staff to know, that we will null one and continue with the law with the other, right?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve staff recommendation on option number two, with the resolution attached to. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Commissioner Peroni. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. On property line. How are you gonna handle the previous owners that are not on the property line and have taken in a new owner who comes in and wants to put the fences, you know, or the other friend, the neighbor, for, for example, the neighbor has passed the property line?
Yeah, there's nothing we can do about the pass.
Okay, that's what you're telling, that's what you're telling?
The pass is in the pass. We, we can do everything that's from now forward. Now, if there's a.
Issue?
An owner that put up a fence without a permit.
Okay.
Then we can make one, because it's been approved, once it goes through, then we can make that person not only take out a permit for that fence, but move the fence back to property line.
Okay, so you'll be able to handle that in terms of?
But those that are existing, then those were approved under prior.
So they can come back to the city and say, well, you allowed it for him, why I'm not allowed to do that?
Those were just grandfather?
There will be grandfather in, as they call it?
Yeah, those will be grandfather, yes.
Okay. All righty, moving on. Information on items. Planning commission attendance record. Why do we have that there? Why, why do we have that planning commission attendance record?
Scaring.
Scare us, tactics?
Just to, to let you know.
Make sure they, they keep an eye on attendance.
Yeah.
All right, staff comments? Any comments from staff?
I have, I have one. I had called the planning commissioners about having a special public hearing next week. That's been changed. We weren't able to get the, you know, our information out in time. So we're going to have that public hearing on a regular meeting on the 22nd. So that would be regarding cannabis, so.
May 22nd? May 22nd?
May 22nd, yes. It'll be at 6:30.
At what time?
6:30.
The regular meeting?
Uh-huh, regular meeting.
Okay, make sure we published it nationwide.
We will, and we will be sending it over to the libraries, the recreation, there's a lot of seniors at the recreation center.
Right.
So we'll be sending that to them, if it hasn't been done yet. And, and then it'll be on the website. Now, the, the library, it'll be at the library too, the library has their own website. And so that a lot of their people read, so it'll be on that website as well.
Ralph, I, you know, as respect to the, to share and the commissioners, you know, the, the last scoping meeting, none of us were invited.
And I apologize for that.
Okay, and, and please keep us, you know, on, you know, updated on this. Also, on your, your outreach, I think it's minimal. Because I came to the scoping meeting and all I saw were developers and the growers. I didn't see Callejica. They weren't here. Our community wasn't here. And, you know, one of the, the recommendations that I asked was, hey, you know, a lot of people are on Facebook and Twitter and all that, you know, this, I hope the city's also keeping in tune and getting a little sophisticated with their, with media, social media. And maybe we can outreach on that. And say you don't have somebody on Facebook, you know, there's that mi Callejico, maybe talk to him, tell him, hey, can you throw something on there for us? Because I would really like to see what that you think, you know, because we're now reaching out.
Any other comments, Ralph?
No, that's it.
Planning commissioners' comments?
Oh, just one. I was calling Ralph today and they're still answering, is Nick Servin answering the?
I apologize.
No voicemail.
I've been, we've been trying to change that and we've been so busy, but, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I just was confused, I.
We'll make sure we change that.
All right, thank you.
What was my comment? You lost me in that. Also, I'm gonna echo on Commissioner Peroni on the cannabis, that we were not invited, told, or advised. I just happened to find out about it because I was browsing the city website on some other business. And it's true. about it because I was browsing the city website on some other business and it's true we need to have more input be kept in the loop of the what's going on just so that we can be abreast of what's coming and what's what's being presented to our community because like I mentioned to you before we get approach from the community on a lot of projects or questions on a lot of things that they hear and they expect us to know or to have answers for them and it's very frustrating when we don't know what's going on because staff does not provide us any email or just you know text message or something and that will be very helpful that we can give the community an intelligent answer and not just be guest estimating or just giving them the runaround because that makes the community you know have a false sense of security as to what is going on with with our within our staff and as we know you know city businesses is right now very weak and meek and we want to fortify that by making sure that we all under the same page so just keep us abreast
we'll make sure that in the future we do
yeah and I don't see where we publish all these public hearings I've been trying to catch up to what newspaper you publish them on
the the scoping was published in the Ivy Press and this one that's coming up has very been published too I think it's gonna come out Wednesday in the Ivy Press and Thursday in the Chronicle
okay
and then like I said we're also gonna ask the recreation to to also post on in their information board and then the library they have a website I don't know if they have a Facebook if they do then we're gonna ask them to to do it
yeah
that way too
yeah because
I know Sandra is a little more sophisticated with her with her
network
communication yeah and so so we'll ask her to to put in whatever she has
yeah because I had a lot of a lot of citizens and CHS students asking me about that cannabis business and they were asking where do we see it where do we post where where did the city post the flyer or how do we get information and what have you some because they wanted to be curious about what's going on others because they wanted to do a research project for their final report so that'll be good to know
it'll be coming out on on this week so both the Chronicle and the Ivy Press
okay
another question Ralph you know about the invitations for us to be aware of these pending meetings there's used to do it where you would be confirming who would be attending like who was invited who's gonna be so that we could show how many are interested in being here that way I know if everybody in the planning commission will be there that they've been notified and then confirmation that we're gonna be there so that we know among each other that we're gonna be there keep each other's support
we'll make sure we do that if it wasn't done this time around
okay one other thing Ralph if we could get our agenda via email also electronically because I've had sometimes my councilwoman ask for my agenda what's on your agenda and I said oh so 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 just email it to me I said no go to the city webpage and she's like what do you mean don't they send it to you electronically nope they don't so
we'll go ahead and do that
if you could please
now you you want it both in 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 hard copy and the email or is email good enough or
I don't care I don't care
I'm fine with hard copy
yeah I'm right across the street so you can go
yeah hard copy is fine
hard copy okay we'll we'll do it both ways we'll we'll email everybody and and then we'll distribute a hard copy so you can have both
yeah because there's like I said there's sometimes where some people are interested to see what we're discussing and they want to see it and I I gotta refer them to the city website
okay
and then Ralph I wanted to praise the staff that you guys are doing a great job and I know you're understaffed and I know we're requesting a lot of things and I'm hoping we're not overburdening you but we just want to try to help to to improve everything we're doing and I want to praise you guys you've been doing a great job
we appreciate that and I second that you guys do a good job
thank you
alright
I'm I'm sure you guys doing a lot of tasks that are not supposed to be doing but just to keep it all going I know
yeah you can just blame it on us
okay
nosy people anyways no further business we'll adjourn this meeting